And tonight, we have a series of five committee meetings, and then that will be followed by a special session. So I'll ask council members and our guests tonight to remember, as we have our first presentations, that we have a goal of completing our discussion within 10 minutes and then allowing questions or comments for an additional five minutes. And I would explain also that we're having this special session tonight because of damages done to the property at Arts West, and that will be explained in the Finance and Personnel Committee. So we'll start with Committee of the Whole. And our first topic is the designated outdoor refreshment area. And I believe that Mayor Patterson would like to make a comment or an introduction.
Thank you, President Isley. Oh, good, I am unmuted. I had to double check. Thank you very much, Council, for letting me bring this forward. I'll just give a real brief background, and then I'm going to let Jessica Thomas, who is the Chair or President for AUBA, the Athens Uptown Business Association, under the Chamber of Commerce. You know, I think it was last year and possibly the year before when I first learned about the designated outdoor refreshment areas, otherwise known as DORAs. In 2017, the state adopted a bill or a change to the revised code under Section 4301-82, which authorizes municipalities to have designated outdoor refreshment areas. We did discuss it. I discussed it with several of the AUBA members last year. But since so much was in flux as to what could be done and what couldn't be done, I decided that last year was not a time to take it up. But this year, again, in my conversations and attending the AUBA meetings to discuss DORA, I felt that it's time to bring this forward. This is something that the mayor has the authority to present to council and apply for a DORA. And these were, again, set up in 2017 as a way to stimulate your downtown economies by having other options for people to enjoy their downtowns or, in our case, uptown areas. Something to point out about a DORA is that the city can set up the timeframes in which DORAs can operate and allow for people to have a beverage outside of a bar or a bar/restaurant. And I believe Jessica Thomas is going to speak to what is in the application for the city of Athens taking on a DORA. And I believe that currently in the state of Ohio, there are, it's greater than 35 cities, I think it's 37 municipalities, that actually have DORAs. I've spoken to the mayor of Chillicothe. They have a DORA and asked him how it was working for their community, and he seemed to indicate that it was working just fine, that there were no negative incidents that have occurred within their DORA. And I think another notable city that's comparable to the city of Athens is Oxford, Ohio, home to Miami University of Ohio, also has a DORA and has had it for some time. Marietta, I believe, is the most recent to put the application through the Department of Commerce. It's a Department of Commerce that has the final authority to approve the designated outdoor refreshment areas. So there is a path in which something would have to follow, with my initiating it, council taking it up, and hopefully adopting, and then it goes through the Department of Commerce and works that path. So I'm going to pass this over to Jessica Thomas, who has worked very closely with a number of people, to include Danny Underhill, the Executive Director for the Athens County Chamber of Commerce. So Jessica, I know you've got a presentation and kind of walking through council, walking council through the DORA process.
Yeah. Hi. Just for anyone that I maybe don't know or don't know well, Jessica Thomas, I'm the current Chair of the AUBA and co-owner of Brendan's Coffee Cafe. So Steve covered just a lot of just the simple basics of where they exist. There are about 37, I think up to 40 now in the state. It's a pretty simple process the Commerce has put, or Department of Commerce has put together. But it primarily just leaves it in local authorities' hands. We can come in and look at an area that we think would be benefited from adding some vibrancy with some more activities, some gathering, making it a more social atmosphere, gathering all of the information, which is pretty easily spelled out in the... I sent one of the documents to everyone just that they wanted to look over it while we were talking. Gathering everybody, you have to have a minimum number of four liquor permit holders within your designated amount, which for our town size is 150 congress, congruous acres. More than enough for us. We have included a map. We've drawn our boundaries to include the uptown street area, down through the armory, you know, our side streets that have businesses to touch on to them and try and include everything going down even West Union and to include Depot Street, thinking, we're thinking this isn't just a COVID reaction, but more of a long-term plan to make Athens and Athens Uptown just a place people want to be. We've gathered, you know, all the information we need. We've got the permits spelled out, you know, we'll be double-checking everything. But, you know, primarily, the biggest things I think you guys are going to want to know is what we're thinking of, boundaries and dates. We talked immediately, this would be a summer thing. There are some around the state, they all pretty much run the same. But when they're open, it changes a little bit. And that's one of the pluses of the DORA. As a local authority, you can change that and open and close it. The Service Safety Director can make that decision. The dates we thought worked best for Athens were post-graduation, pre-move-ins, so May 7th to August 15th, thereabouts, depending on the year, obviously. That gives us our summer crowd, our summer quiet down. Streets are a little quieter, plenty of parking, all that good stuff. It kind of opens it up to make it just a really local, casual, social feel uptown. It's a pretty interesting concept. When I saw Marietta, I thought it was really wild and I thought it was really fun. But basically, anyone with a liquor permit would be able to be included. They would sell a drink in a simple cup. It would be labeled, stickered, printed, whatever you do. And you can only drink in that cup, you know, just the drink from that establishment. You can take it out on the streets. You can walk up and down. You can go to a non-liquor establishment. If they have a sign that, in our minds, is like the traffic signal of a green, you can go in and out of places, retail, other non-liquor-serving restaurants, hang out, eat food there, shop, you know, whatever you want to do. We're hoping this will spur just some more seating and things, parklets uptown, that we could just kind of have hangout areas. We've discussed a few maybe ideas for that. Places that sell it would have a different color just to signify that you can buy a DORA drink and they want to participate. It's up to each individual business. And we would be touching base with all of them, saying yes, they want to or do not. And then the red would say, if you don't want to participate, then, you know, no one is obligated to. It's basically the simplest way is that all laws are in place except for open container within our boundaries during the times that we have set. We would have boundary signs that would indicate when you're inside the boundaries and that you cannot take alcohol beyond that boundary. Yeah, the mayor mentioned Oxford has one. Marietta is currently finishing theirs and putting theirs in place. Chillicothe, Powell, Bowling Green, Kent, Akron, I think Toledo even. There's a lot, and several college towns. And they're all, you know, looking at the maps relatively close to campuses. And it's summertime, and most of them are doing it when the students aren't around. And it's just a pretty interesting idea. One of the, you know, kind of the leading or bigger things is we kind of led people last year with talking about parklets. We're hoping this will spur some more on. And it just adds another layer of people coming. We want to really attract people into Athens and uptown from the Hocking Hills in the summer, and we had a lot last summer. And this is another thing that people are going to talk about if we can get this kind of moving along and in place for the uptown area. That's the basics of it. I kind of wanted to leave plenty of time just for everyone to ask as many questions as they wanted to get in. I feel like there might be a few.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And do we have questions from council members? Councilmember Snidely and then Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, President Isley, and thanks so much for sharing all that information, Jessica. I appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. Do you know what the impact this had on communities as far as what sort of environment was, how the environment changed, if at all, uptown or in wherever areas where this was implemented? As far as behaviors? Because that's the first thing that comes into my mind is alcohol being consumed outdoors. We're so kind of ingrained into doing that indoors and for a variety of reasons. So can you speak a little bit to that? And my other question was, if you know the answer, did this have any positive impact economically on communities that implemented this? Did they see an increase in tourism? Did the businesses experience an increase in patronage with this change? Thanks.
Yeah. So for the first question, well, really, a little bit for both. The oldest one, I think, is maybe 2017. So they've never been around a lot, and most went into place last summer. So I don't know if there's a lot of detailed information yet. The times also will play into kind of the atmosphere. When we have those dates, we are definitely not thinking late night. We're not thinking like younger people necessarily out late. During those dates, Thursday, 5:00 to 10:00, Friday, Saturday, noon to 10:00, Sunday, 12:00 to 8:00. So it would definitely be geared more towards what we expect to be more an older adult crowd, families that maybe are just uptown. And we're going to continue exploring ideas that can be added on down the line that would make it not a just hang out and drink on the sidewalk, which I think a lot of people would get bored of pretty quickly. But to make it more of a social gathering aspect. We don't have a lot of research just yet on that. You know, Marietta's still finishing, and Oxford's just started last... The ones that are most comparable to us. So those are the things we'd want to reach out and find out. I think I forget what else you were going to say. I should have written notes as you were talking.
When Councilmember Reisner asks his question, go ahead.
Yeah, I feel like there could be overlap.
A couple of questions. One is for businesses who do not want someone to come in with an alcoholic beverage, how are they going to prevent it? I mean, you could placar a sign up and say, "Don't bring anything in." But, hey, you know, you get a crowd of, say, 10. They all have a cup. They want to go into a particular store. I'm not going to name any, but I could think of a couple where it would be inappropriate to have alcohol in. What can you do? Would there be any penalties for that? What is Plan B there?
That is not something, I guess, we've gone down that path yet. I mean, primarily, we're going to start with, you know, everything, all of the DORAs that I've read, all of the proposals I've read, makes it very clear to the public. And there's going to be a very, you know, there's going to be a lot of public education that will have to happen, that the signs are out there, it's on the door, and you have to follow the signs. If you're bringing a drink in where it's clearly is labeled as a red, then you're violating liquor laws. And it's not considered, you know, a legal open container. So that's where you could call police or you could call, you know, and tell them you just have to leave. I don't imagine that's going to be a huge issue. Earlier in the day, not a lot of people that maybe are going to push their way into places. I mean, we hope. I don't think it's, I don't see it being a big issue. But, you know, it's something we'd have to talk. We could call around and see if anyone's had that as a problem. Most of what we have are from the different venues that are doing it are just, you know, them showing people who are just coming, socializing, walking around. And it's going to take a little time to really know exactly what the impact is going to be. Anything that brings people up into an area, though, and might attract younger people to want to come up into the area. You know, we want to get more of the mid to late 20 people that want to live and stay in Athens and grow our community and see the things that they really want to see in the communities that they live in. You know, if you go to a Short North or an area like that with a gallery hop, there's things like that you can add on down the line that will really add to it also.
Well, my second thing would be, would this be an expansion of, say, more parklets? You know, we convert more parking spaces over to places for people to sit down and socialize?
When we talk about it, yeah. I mean, that would be, we wouldn't expand outside of what that ordinance has.
Well, there'd be the potential to do that. If the demand were to develop, then such a thing could become a probability, not even a possibility.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, we could definitely expand, you know, by having more parklets. I can, you know, there's some sit-down restaurants that didn't do a parklet last year because it wasn't necessarily beneficial because they couldn't have alcohol on the sidewalks and they couldn't have, you know, people drinking. But would they do this? This is a way, better way for them to use a parklet. And there'd still be limits on the number of spaces taken up. Some of that, you know, might have wiggle room, but there's, you know, there's guidance set forth in those. It'd be great to see more of them. I mean, really make for a fun evening.
Yeah, I can think of one in particular.
Councilwoman Feltzer, yes, you had a question.
Thank you, President Isley. Yeah, Jessica, thank you so much for your excellent presentation. I agree very much with the goal of getting more 20-somethings to enjoy living in Athens and hopefully decide to stay in here. So that would be really great. I'm just wondering, I think having more parklets would be ideal. But for the other cities that have these DORA things, do they close the streets down so that cars can't go through? Or do they turn them into temporary pedestrian zones? Or are there any issues with people, like, getting hit by cars or drivers complaining or anything?
Yeah, so they are not road closures. And that is, from the AUBA perspective largely, one of the perfect parts about it. We have a lot of talks over the years of people thinking, you know, pedestrian areas would be great. It doesn't very often come from the business community or the people that live in those areas. And this is kind of a perfect cross-section where you have the social aspect of the outdoors, wandering and strolling and drinking, but you also then maintain traffic. All DORAs maintain normal traffic patterns. Legacy street events would still be able to take place. You know, Boogie on the Bricks wouldn't be affected, Last Call, all of those. You can shift around within your DORA. But traffic would be maintained. I mean, I don't know that there have been any accidents or that there haven't been. I think it's early enough in the evening. I don't think it's been a problem that I'm aware of. I guess it's another one of the things where it's so young. Most of them came into play in the last year, maybe two, and then some were trickling in before that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Jessica, thanks for all the information that you sent in advance. I enjoyed reading through everything on the drive. It really was informative and provided a lot of information. And thanks for being here tonight. I think that encouraging more sort of outdoors, social walk and visit and check out our local shops and restaurants and businesses is absolutely something we want to encourage. And just some of the comments as far as concern about behavior or crowd. I took my kids to the Columbus Zoo today, and there were many parents or grandparents walking their small children around the zoo while drinking a beer. And so it was, I just thought of that because of this conversation that we really can have a mix of family-friendly setting and atmosphere and adult beverages. And so I think that this is something that we could look as an opportunity to really bring some different types of social gatherings to our uptown area. And I hope that we're able to do this.
Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. You talked about going down to Depot and such. And I'm wondering how, you know, food vending, food carts. One of the Brew Fest Week things was in the Depot parking lot, and that seemed to really, really work. And I'm wondering how food and beer carts are going to be worked into it because they kind of have a different licensing. So, thank you. I think that the idea is awesome. I agree with, you know, Sarah, and the adult beverage doesn't mean that you're going to be, you know, outrageously horrible. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. So the Depot thing, you know, the Brew Week event, that would be one of the legacy events that we would be working around. We could decide, you know, the mayor could decide that that is an event where the DORA would just be not on that weekend because it would be more headache or not really working for that environment. Really, there wouldn't be any other food trucks or carts or anything that would really come into play with it. It's going to be along the boundaries. If the food trucks, you know, if the burrito buggy or whatever, if they are up there, you know, they could get food and wander with that. They're not really confined by space already. But it can be definitely turned off and on so it doesn't affect, you know, brew events that are going on already. And then one thing I actually was reading today, just as ways to monitor, were things that some places use wristbands. And the day that you get your first drink, you've got a wristband so that when you're out on the street, it's very clear that you are participating in the DORA, that you are following the rules, and that they can easily see if you are, you know, holding a random solo cup or if you have one from an actual DORA place. But yeah, those things we could still, we're working around and we're making sure that they still have their normal boundaries of how they function and work and what they're there to do.
Okay, do we have any final comments or questions from council members or administration? I do want to give a moment for summary, and I want to give a moment if there are any questions from our attendees. Looks like we've got Ben Ziff, Councilmember Ziff, then the mayor, then we'll turn to any comments from our attendees.
Thank you, President Isley. And, whoa, I just had one question. Could I actually just get that information forwarded to me that I think everybody else got? I didn't receive it this afternoon. I just wondered if I could look it over.
Definitely.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all I got. This sounds like a great idea. I really, really like it. Thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'll be a really fun idea.
Mayor Patterson.
So a couple of things, as I was listening to the questions coming from council members. Number one is that I did mention that I spoke to the mayor of Chillicothe, and he seemed to feel that it was benefiting downtown Chillicothe to the point that they have revised theirs. They have amended their actual DORA to include other areas in the downtown area, expanded it. And again, Mayor Luke Feeney did not indicate to me that they had experienced any problems with DORA. In other words, excessive drinking or other things going on. So that's number one. Number two, absolutely, the parklets will be, I think, something that I believe that within the number of parklets that Andrew Chickie, Deputy Service Safety Director, has identified that could go in the uptown area, finding the right locations, that we may see an expansion of parklets, which fits well with a DORA. The third thing that I heard was the question about someone wandering into a place where maybe they shouldn't with a beverage. As was indicated, people have the ability to have a red, yellow, or green sticker on their window. Green meaning, yep, you can wander in here or you can get a drink in here and beverage in here with the labeled cup, and you can go out and wander, shop up and down Court Street or whatever. Yellow means that there's limitations to what can and can't happen. Red means, number one, and bars have this option. Bars and restaurants have the option to sit there and say, "Sure, I serve alcohol, but I don't want, I don't want to have to deal with that." And so they would have a red sticker, which would indicate that they're not participating in the DORA. So, well, I mean, they're going to be in the DORA footprint. The other thing I want to share real quick, if I may, President Isley, because I think this is important for the viewing audience to see, those who are tuning in tonight. If I could just share a screen really quickly, and I know we're operating on a time crunch. Can council see that okay?
Yes.
Good. All right. So what you're looking at is the map that would be in the application, and that is the boundaries of the DORA. And you'll make note, in particular, that Congress is not in the DORA, nor is College Street, but Carpenter, State, Washington, Union, and as was mentioned, Union all the way down to Depot and Station. And that is because we do have Athens Encorked and to allow for them, if they choose to be part of the DORA, then they could. So I will stop sharing and I will stop.
Thank you. And very briefly, so this is part of an application process. We would need to advertise in the newspaper. The ordinance would need to come forward. It would need to have the three readings. And we are intent on having those three readings so we get adequate notice from the public. And then I would like to see if any of our attendees tonight, if you would indicate by raising your hand if you wanted to make a comment or ask a question. And I see Danny Underhill, yes, Executive Director of Chamber of Commerce. Yes, please, Danny.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for taking time to take this up. And a special thanks to Jessica Thomas for taking the time to present this to council. In shorts, as the Chamber of Commerce, we are in extreme support of this measure and think that it is important to continue to drive additional revenue and business into the uptown area, not just from the professionals that we hope to attract and stay here, but also from the tourists who will be coming to this area thanks to some of the economic developments and the outdoor recreation that is happening. This crowd is looking and searching out, seeking out places that have activities such as a DORA. So we are hoping to do our due diligence and look forward to working with council in hopes to make something like this beneficial for the entire uptown area. Again, thank you very much to Jessica Thomas for the amount of work and leadership she's put forward to this project.
Okay. Thank you, Danny. And thank you both for being here tonight to present and answer our questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. All right. We'll move on to our next committee agenda item, and that's the Power a Clean Future Ohio Community. And I believe that Councilmember Crowell has taken the lead on this one.
Thank you, President Isley, yes. The Environment and Sustainability Commission, working with the city administration, in particular the mayor's office, is putting forth a resolution to participate in the Power for a Clean Future Ohio. It is a, provides a free framework for numerous different sort of audits and examinations in the city, most particularly towards reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. By passing this resolution, and just in case you're not aware, Power a Clean Future Ohio, they are working with cities and governments across the state of Ohio to really work towards our future, our clean energy future. And it does provide a lot of tools and resources that the city can utilize, in particular towards carbon reduction. And I'm not going to read through the entire resolution. You all can do that, and maybe we will when it is presented at regular council. But I will note that this resolution would not only authorize the city to participate in Power a Clean Future Ohio, but it would also recognize the city as a bronze-level Power a Clean Future community. And section one of the resolution would commit the city to a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And working with the Office of the Mayor, we believe that we can reduce our greenhouse gas admissions 50% below the 2010 levels by 2030. And I'd like to note that the overall campaign calls for 30% by 2030. And I'd like to note that the overall campaign calls for 30% by 2030. But the mayor and the commission believe that we can do better, and that we can do 50% by 2030. So, this would also include committing to developing a plan during fiscal year 2022 to have a roadmap for the city to achieve this goal. And then we'll also prioritize the lowest cost measures listed in the plan for us to meet our energy needs. And it in particular points out that we will be particularly mindful of all taxpayer dollars and any impact on consumers' personal expenses. And finally, it does appoint the Deputy Service Safety Director to serve as the city's PFCEO coordinator and the Environment and Sustainability Commission as the coordination team. So, are there any questions about this resolution that we will be seeing next week? Yes, Member Clodfeller.
I don't have a question, but I would just like to applaud everyone who was involved in the decision to cut our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. I think that's an absolutely wonderful goal for our community.
I will just point out, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, is that these goals and these targets are set by different people, and you very well may be familiar with President Biden's, the federal initiative. They are basing their baseline on 2005 levels. So, it's slightly different than what we're doing here with 2010 levels. And there's lots of reasons to do that, and why the federal government is doing that, and why Power a Clean Future Ohio, and why the city. But anyway, just so we know, this is 2010 levels, 50% below 2010 levels by 2030. Good question, good comment, Member Clodfeller. Anyone else? Yes, Member Smedley.
Thank you, Member Crowell. This is just more of a comment, just to connect this proposal to previous discussion and any other environmental proposal or resolution that we passed. It does state here that the city, speaking about the Dora, that the Service Safety Director can establish the type of cup that's used. And I would hope that, and given our tendency to be more environmentally friendly, if the Dora were to proceed, that we pick a very, easily disposable and environmentally friendly cup. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smedley. And that was a topic of conversation in the Dora meetings that were happening the past few weeks. So, thank you for adding that. Other questions from council members? Yes, Member Fall.
Thank you. I think that this is right in line with the climate emergency resolution that we did a couple of years ago. It did set out some goals and aspirations for the city to come up with, and I think that this is right in line, given what we now can do. I think that besides just carbon and energy reduction, doing a zero-waste program also will help to reduce even further that carbon footprint. And so, I'd like to see some of the tools that are being used for this to be able to start looking at zero waste and such in the city. Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Okay, Mayor Patterson, please. I don't have a question. I will state that in my work with Power Clean Future Ohio, that when this started, they were asking for 30 by 30, 30% reduction by 2030. I felt, knowing our city, knowing our citizens, we can, 30 to me was a bar too low. And that's why I asked Councilmember Crowell to change that language to read 50 by 30. I also had asked the Clerk of Council some time ago if she would pull all resolutions or and/or ordinances that had anything to do with the climate. And I'm proud of this city. I mean, there's a lot that has already been done, a lot that has been initiated. Everything from the Green Fleet, which was an ordinance, to a number of resolutions, as was mentioned by Councilmember Fall and others, is that I am a firm believer that we can meet and likely exceed 50 by 30. Member Reisner.
Maybe I missed it, and you already talked about it, but numerically, how do we measure?
Member Reisner, that is an excellent question, and it's something that the the Environment and Sustainability Commission has been struggling with and implementing for some time now. If you get into the nitty-gritty of greenhouse gas emissions, they separate them by scope one, two, and three. And if you really are going to tackle this whole problem, you have to consider all three scopes. And scope three is the hardest to sort of track down. We were joined at our last commission meeting by a consultant who would work with the city as part of the Power a Clean Future to really nail down exactly how we're doing this measuring and how many, and which in each scope. Because of the difficulty of doing this, a number of years ago, the Environment and Sustainability Commission was looking at energy purchases, so electricity and gas, transportation, and buildings. So, we were looking at the greenhouse gas emissions connected with those three areas. You can get into agriculture. You can get into all types of different areas, which are much harder. And I think it'll be nice to have a consultant that is dedicated to figuring some of this out, but I think we're going to learn a lot through the process, Member Reisner.
Okay.
Question at all? It's, the actual answer is it's in metric, metric tons equivalency is the actual metric that we will be measuring. But how you get to those numbers is...
Okay. So, what we can't, cannot do is walk outside the building with a CO2 measuring device and say, well, this is what it is today. That's my base. 10 years from now, I'll do the same thing again, and hopefully, it'll be down 50%. We can't do that. Unfortunately, the atmosphere is kind of universal. So, you know, I'm just curious how to...
I think we're going to learn more in the coming months.
Yes. And Member Reisner, Member Clodfeller, hold on a second. I think the mayor maybe had a little bit more information. I mean, some of it, Councilmember Reisner is basically as easy as looking at our energy consumption for all 84 of our mercantile accounts for the city. And if we've switched over everything to LED lighting and notice our electric bill has dropped down, that electric bill, that the rate of consumption of electricity reflects our carbon footprint. And therefore, to use that as one of several metrics to sit and say, this is how well we are doing, or not. The same holds true. You know, six years ago, we didn't have an electric vehicle to be found in the city. And by migrating our fossil fuel fleet over to EVs, that's another metric that can be used based upon the fact that we are not literally burning fossil fuel to run our vehicles on our city streets. So, there's several things that can be used as our metric. To the mayor's point, the more renewable energy that we are responsible for in the city of Athens obviously helps us a great deal, too. So, you see those projects coming forward. Member Clodfeller.
I was just wondering if the way, it's kind of related to measurement. If the measurements of the greenhouse gas emission reductions take into account anything related to carbon or greenhouse gas sequestration. So, if we plant more trees in the city, or we put in more long-rooted perennial flowers, or, you know, other things like that, will that be counted to offset some of the emissions? Or do you know if that's part of the equation?
That's a good question, too. I do not know the answer.
Okay.
Member Fall.
I want to point out that a lot of these programs that we're starting on are going to include audits. And so, they're going to audit the systems, just like we're doing with our audit of electric vehicles. Then, you know, we have concrete data that the audit has collected, and then benchmarks to go forward to be able to match the goals of 50 by 30 with the benchmarks we need to get to before 30. So, that's mostly how these programs work. And the audits are huge with information, and that right there is a really important thing that these programs do. Thank you.
Member Fall, you're absolutely right. And knowing where you are in order to improve is obviously key. And we do have a 2015 benchmark within the Environment and Sustainability Commission. But again, it didn't include everything. We hope that the consultant will work with the city to get a more exact sort of baseline from 2020. Anything that we use for 2010 is going to be something of an estimate because we don't have all of the data necessary to really know exactly what was happening in 2010. But we will be moving forward, and those baselines are key. Other questions? Yes, mayor. Not a question. We also have the performance or perfection group that came forward with an audit of the city in 2011. So, we, there is data that exists that we can fall back on and say, this is what our emissions were back then. Because as we went, worked with that group, we were kind of treating things à la carte. But even then, we were changing the flashlights over to T8s, which now we have LED. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. That's all, President Nisley.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowell, move on now to the Planning and Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Fall, with councilmembers Reisner, Grace, and Smedley.
Great. Thank you. Just two agenda items. We have a historic properties process that you can go through in order to designate your property as a historic property. The code office and the planner would like to see a fee associated with that. When the first ordinance went through with the process, there was no fee associated with it. This would put in a $70 fee that would go in our code, chapter one, that all our fees now go into. Questions? Okay. Mr. Reisner?
Yeah. If my property is, gets the designation, do I get to put a plaque on my door or something?
I think the mayor should answer that. That's much more of an administrative. Do we have a plaque yet?
No, we don't. So, Jeff, just to indicate that you live there, Jeff, is that what this plaque would be for?
Well, it's rather historical in itself with my age, but, you know, I'm thinking, you know, more like the, you know, George Washington slept here or something.
There, yes. I think that that's a good point, and it's a good thing for the administration to think about. Thank you. So, any other questions? Great. The next agenda item, our word, one council member brought it forward. So, I'll hand it over to her. So, thank you, Councilmember Smedley. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. First, I wanted to give some quick thanks before we get back into this conversation. I wanted to thank Law Director Lisa Eliasen, President Nisley, Clerk of Council Debbie Walker, Peggy Lee, who you all heard from a few weeks ago from Southeast Ohio Legal Services, and Jody Ricard of Athens Metro Housing, who has also been helping behind the scenes on this. Lots of learning on my part in researching from my colleagues, even as recently as this afternoon. So, we are bringing this back up for discussion. As a quick reminder, we are adding source of income to the city's ordinance called Title III Administrative Provisions. And when we say source of income, again, just to kind of get everyone on the same page, we mean, and I'm reading this from the ordinance, lawful income derived from wages, social security, supplemental security income, all forms of federal, state, or local assistance, payments, or subsidies, including rent vouchers, child support, spousal support, and public assistance. So, we are specifically adding source of income to Section C of that ordinance, which focuses on discrimination in housing. And there's like a laundry list of groups that we are, that the ordinance already has, that encompasses people who you can't discriminate against, and as I'm sure you've seen in the ordinance, and includes creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and so on, someone with a disability, the familial status. And again, what we're doing is adding source of income to that list of groupings. So, I have three updates for you all from our last discussion. The first update is to say that we looked at, there was one line in particular that spoke to segregation. It's one of the lines in one of the first paragraphs in the ordinance. And we are proposing that we do not add source of income to that list of folks. And the reason for that is that adding source of income to that section would open the city up to a possibility of a situation where, say, a housing unit is specifically designed for those who have a housing voucher. And it would be considered, it could potentially be considered discriminatory if that housing unit does not permit someone who doesn't have a voucher to live there. So, it's sort of a reverse discrimination in sort of our minds of what we're trying to protect, but the unintended consequence that it could create. So, by not adding source of income to that small piece, we think we're addressing that concern. The second update is that we spoke to our new insurance carrier to confirm that they would in fact defend us if we were to face a challenge or lawsuit or civil suit of some kind, and they confirmed that they would indeed. So, that was good information. And lastly, during our, the third update is about the penalty section. Last time when we discussed this, there were some questions about what does the penalty currently look like? And do we want to revisit what it looks like? So, we'll talk about the penalty section in three different ways. So, option one for the penalty section would be to leave it as is. And as is, it states that any person, firm, or corporation violating any provisions of the sections that we're talking about shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction thereof, shall be fined in accordance to, in accordance to the section 2929.21D of ORC. And that section pertains to the sentencing of misdemeanors. And then it states, each and every day during which such discrimination continues, shall be deemed a separate offense. So, that's how it is now. We could leave it as is. That's the way it's always been. And like I said, this ordinance has been in existence protecting other folks. We're just adding source of income. So, we can leave it as is. Option two would be to make a few modifications, namely, is to clarify the degree of the misdemeanor. Right now, it does not state in our ordinance what type of misdemeanor it is. When it goes unsaid, in city code, by default, it's a minor misdemeanor. So, we could simply add minor misdemeanor to that throughout, add in a fee of not more than $100, and keep in that language, each and every day during such discrimination continues, shall be deemed a separate offense. Option two would be in, most in line with Ohio revised code. And currently, the state is in the process of doing something similar of what we're doing. They are proposing to add to their fair housing law a line in there that would include a source of income as well. And the penalty associated with that revision keeps it as a civil penalty. So, according to, based on my conversation with Lisa, option two might be the most in line with Ohio revised code and would be the most appropriate if we wanted to kind of fall in line with what the state's doing. Option three is a more aggressive approach. It would make subsequent offenses in a two-year period a higher offense. It would also include jail time and higher fines, and that's outlined in your drive. And based on the conversations that I had with Law Director Eliasen, option three would not be recommended because it's not in line with the Ohio revised code. So, that is my summary of where we are now, and I welcome any questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. Member Reisner.
I'm a little confused. I thought the option three that you just mentioned was more in line with what the state of Ohio is planning on doing on their own. And now, you're telling me the law director is saying that option two would fall... you're telling me the law director is saying that option two would fall more in line with the Ohio Revised Code?
Yeah, that's my understanding. And that's, the caveat is, the amendment that I mentioned that is adding source of income, it was only recently introduced. So, I guess option four might be to table the penalty discussion until after Ohio passes and finalizes its amendments. But going ahead and including source of income to the other sections. Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it does. Option three then, for the city, would be based upon what the state of Ohio might eventually come up with and actually pass as a law.
Perhaps.
Which hasn't happened yet.
Correct. Right. Yeah, option two, I think, is what is in place now in Ohio. That was, that was my understanding.
Okay. All right. You've covered it up. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure whether we would want to table just one section, because then we'd have to go and amend the new ordinance. So we just tabled the whole thing. I, I think that makes the most sense from an administrative point of view. Instead of going ahead with the ordinance and leaving out the penalty to come back to after we pass the ordinance and reintroduce another ordinance. So, I think we just, we need to table the whole thing or...
President Nisley?
Well, and let me suggest another option, because sometimes we have seen legislation languish at the state legislature for a year or more, and we have a recommendation from the law director to go with option three that's closest to the Ohio Revised Code penalty, or two, option two. So we could go with that, get the legislation passed. If we need to amend later, we could, you know, if there was the will of the council to amend later to make it in line with something the legislature might change, we could do that at a later date. But we'd have this moved along and on the record for us, for the city.
Member Grace?
And I would just say, when there are things that we have a, a local penalty outlined, and then there is also a penalty in ORC, that it is, it is up to discretion of, of officers or prosecutors or those bringing, bringing the charge, whether they want to go under the local ordinance or the state. And so, it's not necessarily a problem for them to be different. It, it can be a problem if the local is, is harsher than the state, that, that can create some, some conflict and, and put the, the city outside its authority. But, but if our penalty is lower than the state, if, if the state would put in, in place a harsher penalty, it could, that could always still be the one that is chosen locally. So, if, if that makes sense. So I guess I'm, I am agreeing with, with President Nisley that we, we should probably, I would say, follow the law director's recommendation. And then, either we could change our local code to match if the state does change, or if the state changes, it, it can always be enforced under ORC rather than local code, if, if that was desired.
That makes sense. I appreciate that. And I would also be in support of moving forward. It's, it is a matter of if we do find ourselves in the position of needing to amend, so be it. But, and I, so yeah, I would, I would agree with President Nisley, Member Grace, that it would be in our best interest to move forward and, and make an update, and then make another update if we need to.
Mayor Patson?
I have a question, because, and I don't know which option this was, but it was mentioned that under, I believe it was ORC, so please correct me if I'm wrong on this, that for each additional day, they can be recited again. My major question to all of you is, who is going to be issuing that citation every day if someone is held in violation day after day after day? Which I-
Yeah, that's a good question, but that's, that's in our language now. So I'm not sure. So that, that's something we already have to face, if that's something, I, I was stressing that that would stay in there.
Thank you, Member Smedley. I just wanted to, first off, just thank you for pursuing this. I think this is a really important thing to add into our ordinances. So thank you so much for doing all this work and research and putting in the time and effort on this. I also, yeah, I just kind of wanted to sort of tag on and I guess agree with President Nisley and Member, Member Grace, that I think definitely moving forward with this, as opposed to waiting to catch up later, is definitely the right course of action, in my opinion. So, yeah. Also, I'd be happy to hand out citations if you ever need to, so.
I don't think we want a legislator issuing citations.
The council members do not have police powers.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you all very much. If you have questions after the fact that you, that you didn't think of, please just reach out. Thank you.
And I do want to do one quick check to see, is there anybody who's an attendee tonight? If they want to raise their hand, if they wanted to make a comment. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. And Councilmember Fall, this is finish our-
Yes, that's the end of the planning and development.
Okay. We'll move, thank you, Councilmember Fall. We'll move on to finance and personnel, and that's chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner and Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. First on our agenda tonight is Arts West and structural repairs. If you are not aware, the public is not aware that a person in an automobile fleeing law enforcement was going at a high rate of speed west on West Union and failed to navigate the curve at Arts West and struck the building. It needs repair immediately. And so we are doing emergency legislation, discussing here in committee tonight for appropriating $100,000 for structural repairs. These will be reimbursed by our insurance, but some certain items are needed immediately, in particular, some floor jacks. We should have more information by our next meeting in terms of actual estimates for the repairs, but we do need to appropriate this money ASAP. And I'll just say that I was able to be at Arts West this past weekend for their, I'm not sure what it was called, pots and plants and presents, and it was great. Emily Beveridge did a wonderful job, and then my, my son found his mother a wonderful Mother's Day present, and, uh, great people, and a really well-done event. So the building is, does need repair, but it's actually an addition to the main building. So the main building is structurally sound, but this addition needs some repair. Are there any questions about this item? Member Claude Felder?
This sounds like repairs that really need to happen. I have no problem with this, but I, I just wondered if you'd be willing to share with the public which account the $100,000 would initially be taken out of before it gets reimbursed?
Uh, yeah, sure. This is, uh, will be, will be presented when we go into our regular meeting later, and I will read the entire ordinance because it is an emergency. But this would be appropriating from the unappropriated balance, $100,000, and appropriating it to Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500. Other questions from F and P Committee? Yes, Member Reisner?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I, I went up there right after the incident occurred and took photos, and I believe I sent them to all members of council except for, for Ben, whose email address I don't have. Hopefully, you, you're, you have a council email address, because I don't like sending council subjects to private addresses. It's just not a good form. But anyway, from the damage that I saw and the, the number of, of cracks and things that went up to the wall because a car impacted on the corner, the amount of concrete block that was knocked across the floors of the, of the room, and the fact that the, the corner of that additional building is office foundation, I think $100,000, frankly, is rather optimistic. And I think, and my point is that we should be prepared to appropriate more as the need arises, but once they really get into the actual planning and construction. So, also to cover the cost of a new picnic table. It was kind of bent out of shape.
Yes, Auditor Heck, do you want to chime in here?
Just to respond to Jeff's comment, I believe you're 100% right. We actually have two things going on here. They've already done some repair, some shoring up.
Yeah.
Which we've moved money around in the Recreation Fund to cover that. The extra $100,000 would be for the actual repairs. And yes, don't be surprised if we have to come back and ask, ask for more. But we are lucky that, that we do have the unappropriated balance to, to do that right now, unless it goes too crazy. But right now, we, we can do that when the time comes.
Thank you, Auditor. Other questions from other council members or city administration? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item of our agenda, information technology vacancy. The city administration is requesting, requesting to fill this position. This position was initially included in the 2019 staffing levels but was never hired. So, there is not, there aren't funds appropriated for this position currently. The office thought that we would discuss this at, at committee and then request the appropriation once everything had been finalized. The position description is in council's drive. The city administration is simply following through on their commitment to inform council of filling positions during the pandemic. Are there any questions about the IT vacancy? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is the lease agreement with the United Seniors of Athens County. I think most of council is aware that the, for some time now, I don't know exactly how long, it could be decades, the United Seniors of Athens County have leased space within the Athens Community Center for their office and their gatherings. And this would be a, an extension of that lease agreement for a period of 10 years, from, I believe, August of 2021, through, I believe, December of 2031, if I read that correctly. Let's see. Beginning August 1, 2021, through 31st day of July, excuse me. So exactly 10 years of 2031, not December. And the United Seniors of Athens County use this space, as I said, for programming for, for senior services. Are there any questions about the lease agreement? Thank you. Seeing none, moving on to the next item. And I'm glad the auditor is here for this, is a request from the auditor's office to examine the Internal Service Fund and general fund administrative costs. These are added, if I understand correctly, to every department within the city. The ordinance that established the specific allocation amounts for each department came from 2015. And the, the Internal Service Fund pays for vehicles and equipment and IT equipment, et cetera. And so it is important to update this and make sure that the specific allocation from each department is correct based on their, the, the equipment and vehicles they have. I understand that the vehicles is kind of set. It's a, it's a relatively easy thing to track. But you can imagine that IT equipment and different types of equipment are used in offices and added, obviously, since 2015. And, and keeping track of all of those numbers and how these allocations should be updated is what the auditor's office is looking to update. And so that is what we were looking at next week. Auditor Heck, is there anything I missed there, or can you explain that better?
No, I just, I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of it. We are required to have this process in place, which includes a policy, plus the, the funds that transfer money from either to, to the Internal Service Fund or to the General Fund for Services. And the only thing that I would like to add, besides we've, we've asked to change those numbers, it's pretty straightforward what we're trying to do. The other part would have to do with how often these are reviewed, going back to the, we did this, the, these ordinances in 2015. We have always transferred funds since I've been in the auditor's office. We had our own policies, but the, the auditors wanted it to be vetted by council back then. And so, it, it's all in writing. But we have different, you know, we'd like to put a, a review schedule in place and probably have it match up. Because it does make a difference, and we do have to be accountable for the money that we transfer from proprietary funds into other funds. And in particular, really, all funds should be held accountable. But, you know, we, we looked at different things about, we've added a few, but also things that have changed. But yeah, there are some that weren't, weren't on these two lists, and they're very different, which you will see when, when you get the information. But if you have any particular questions, feel free to ask me. But, you know, one of them says it shall be computed annually in October, and the other one says reviewed annually for any deviations, but should be revised only as needed. So, it's, you know, that's a lot of leeway, and that one, and the other one's pretty specific. So, we'd like to, you know, put some language out there, and then if council wants to question it, it, it can be, a lot of it won't change very much. And if you have an extra computer here and there, that's not going to change those percentages. It's not worth going through a whole process. But same with a vehicle, the number of vehicles doesn't change, but sometimes it does. And that makes a difference in how much these funds and departments have to transfer that money. So, we, we have some samples, and we've sent information to Debbie. So, unless you have any questions, that's about all I can tell you right now.
Member Reisner, go ahead.
All right. I'm sorry.
So these are shared costs, you know, from department to department. And I'm thinking about IT. We're now in a process of putting fiber throughout the city, connecting up the various scattered departments and so on, you know, fire stations and Arts West and rec centers and so on. There'll be traffic, internet traffic, data traffic, and so on, going through those wires. Some will be used more than others. It is a cost. And I'm wondering, how is that going to get shared out?
That I don't know. That would be up to IT to come up with a, a plan or a program. I, I wouldn't know where to start with something like that. I'm not an IT person. And so what we've done, really, by what we do with the cost allocation process, is pick items that we, that we can- items that we that we can track and and just use those, you know?
Well, it'd be analogous to the amount of electricity each department would use. You have a meter, the meter runs, you go, oh, that's how many kilowatt hours they did. It's it is absolutely possible and it's done all the time. I mean, certainly Spectrum does it. They meter how much data flow is going into my computer all the time. And then, I don't know it, but they then turn the dial somewhere and they say, ah, you're using too much, I'm going to turn you back. Oh, you're not using much at all. If we increase it, maybe you will. But that's a possibility.
Yeah, I think that would have to be brought up to the IT department by the administration to see if if they would be able to do that, if that is something we want to do. A lot of this information is very subjective.
Yeah, I'm just thinking ahead of what the state auditors are going to pull one of these days because they're going to look at that and say, hey, you know something? You guys really should be looking at that. And you don't have a policy. Well, we'll have to write that up.
Or it doesn't include that. The policy, you know, lays out what we're looking at when we're charging these departments.
Exactly.
Funds. So, yeah.
You see where I'm going with this, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've been asking for help with this. That's not really something my office can do is to figure that out. The reason we have an easy way to get the vehicles and equipment, like lawn mowers and things like that, is they have a they have a system, the iWork system that they use. All their information is in there and that can be pulled out and then we can use that. Otherwise, we don't know, you know, what gets serviced on a regular basis or, you know, anything like that. Our fixed asset system isn't set up to track for these purposes.
Yeah.
And it's a it's a little bit unreliable because information we get to enter into our fixed asset system isn't as reliable as it should be.
I see.
Yeah. So.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. As we see those numbers, we'll be able to discuss more with the auditor. Okay, moving on to the last item on our agenda is appropriations. The first one is a valve exerciser machine for the water department. You, if this rings a bell to you, means you were on council last year. We discussed this, but it was the machine was not purchased due to taking careful, keeping, being very careful with our budget. But it is a machine that is now needed. This is a machine that is $90,000 and it does exactly what a valve exerciser does. It's sort of safely turns valves on and off and creates them and enables them not to get, you know, stuck or corrosive. It's required by EPA and it will save time and energy and hopefully valves forward. As I said, this is a $80,000 appropriation. Any questions about our valve exerciser? Thank you. Moving forward, the plant manager of the wastewater treatment plant has requested $25,000 for equipment. This would include a motor as well as a utility cart. $25,000 to the wastewater treatment plant. Questions? Member Reisner, is that a hand? Yes, please.
Yeah, motor for what?
Hi, that's a good question. Let me see if I have that. I do not have that in my notes, Member Reisner. But I can get more information for you unless the mayor, the mayor says he'll get more information for you.
I will. I just pass it around to council, so.
I just have in my notes, it's a replacement motor. It's not a new motor for something, it's a replacement.
Thank you, auditor.
It has something to do with wastewater.
Okay, moving on, the last item is transfer $200,000 from the water fund to transfer to the water debt fund to cover our debt payment due in January, I believe. Any comments or questions? Thank you, President Isley. That ends Finance and Personnel.
Thanks, Councilmember Crowell. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee and that's chaired by Councilmember Claude Felter and joined by Councilmembers Crowell and Ziff.
I will unmute. Okay, so the first item we are looking at tonight is the West Union Acquisition Project. So if it's all right with you, I'm going to read the email message that our acting engineer and director of the Public Works Department, Jessica Adine, sent to me about this. She said, "New legislation is needed for the West Union Street Project, Project 322. An authorization and appropriation of $100,000 is needed from account 220 to cover right-of-way acquisition services. Since the project contains federal funds, the city needs to contract with an Ohio Department of Transportation-approved right-of-way acquisition firm that will follow the federal right-of-way acquisition process. The fee does not include funds for the actual easements. These will be known later after appraisals are completed if the easements aren't donated, which is always a good option. The cost for the right-of-way acquisition firm includes meetings, negotiations, appraisals, and closings for each parcel identified for an easement. It is typical for this work to be directly hired through a design consultant. But in this case, they offered to remove it from their contract so the city avoids paying additional fees." So that is what I have at this point from Jessica Adine. I will try to either answer your questions or find out the answers to them. Member Crowell?
So I realize that acquisition is necessary for most of our major artery road rehabilitation projects. I'm just curious about, you know, how much, you know, acquisition we're talking about? Are we are we widening Union Street significantly? And if so, will that include bicycle lanes? We do have a similar situation with Union Street that we have with East State Street. Is it some degree runs parallel with the Hawk Hocking and Dina Bike Way? And I'm sure we'll have citizens who believe that our roadways don't need bike lanes when we have a bikeway nearby. However, I would argue that the Complete Streets philosophy and policy that the City of Athens, Ohio has looks to the future. And that's my main point about, you know, bike lanes is that we're not building them necessarily for today. We're building them for the future and the way that our community will change and is changing. And I just wanted to find out exactly if the acquisition was just to make the roadway wider or is just necessary in all points for for the project.
That is an excellent question, Member Crowell, and I very much agree with your goal to have more bike lanes. Mayor Patterson, I saw your hand up. Do you have more information about this?
I do, unless you do, Councilmember Claude Felter, I didn't mean to raise my hand so quickly.
No, that's okay. You're welcome to go ahead.
Okay. There will be some widening. It won't be extensive widening that goes on on West Union. There will also be the roundabout at the intersection of Schaefer and West Union. That too will require some right-of-way expansion. So, and I can can get more detail on what the West Union project will entail moving forward. So, but to your question, your initial question, there will be some widening and there will be, again, the need to do some widening, certainly at the intersection of Schaefer and West Union and in the area down near Larry's Doghouse. There needs to be some widening from there to the bridge.
Member Smedley?
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. Yes, Mayor Patterson, you read my mind. My question was going to be, would there be any way to address the traffic concerns in front of our much beloved Larry's Doghouse on Weenie Wednesdays especially? Thank you.
I believe when there were some sort of public events for people to see the plans for West Union Street, that the the recent engineer, our past engineer and Jessica Adine, were talking about Weenie Wednesdays and they were considering that in terms of how to handle the traffic on West Union. So you're right, that's a really key thing on the West Side. Any other questions from council members? Okay. Any other city officials? All right, we will, Member Crowell, I will try to get more information about whether or not bike lanes are planned to be included in that and I will let you know if I find out. Okay, the second item is potentially kind of a fun one, I think. Boone Troyer is the person that that created this. He, of course, is the executive director of the Tourism and Convention Bureau. And Boone somehow got about 200 or 250 motorcycle riders to come to Athens on June 17. They're going to be riding around southeast Ohio and he somehow encouraged them to come into Athens. And they, apparently, they're going to be here, he thinks, from approximately 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. or something like that. So what he's hoping is that we will be willing to close one block of West Union Street between Court Street and Congress Street, the one where BW3s is and some locally owned businesses, and so that they can park their motorcycles. And other options were discussed. I asked if maybe they could do that in the parking garage or something so we wouldn't have to close the street. But he said there were very various reasons why they, and actually, city officials agreed that there were various reasons why that block of West Union Street would work better. And Boone has been talking, if we approve this, Boone has already kind of kind of hinted with the business owners, but he's definitely going to talk to all the business owners uptown about that so that hopefully they would be willing to stay open till about 7:00. Because it's possible that those local site, excuse me, motorcycle riders would even do some shopping as well as having dinner. So it could be a nice little boost for our economy and we just need to shut down one block of that street. But this is your your choice. Member Fall?
We've had the Vulcan Riders Association come a couple years ago for one of their conferences or rides. I'm not sure what they call them. So this is following on, they had, from what was done under Paige Allos, they really, really loved the Athens area and so now they're coming back again. So this is building on other things that have been going on. We did close down the street then for them and did some other things because they were here for multiple days. So I think I support this. This is a good build on to the, you know, our tourism uptown during summer especially.
Thank you for that background information, Member Fall. Other members of council? Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the Transportation Committee for this evening.
Thanks, Member Claude Felter. We'll now move on to City and Safety Services and this is chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Fall and Claude Felter.
Good evening. Thank you, President Isley. We have three items on our agenda this evening. Excuse me. The first item is that our Fire Department has some equipment that they are ready to dispose of and has come through recently. They, we do have a very specific disposal process. And so they they are following the guidelines of providing the list of each item and letting us know what what they need to do. And so what we have are 27 self-contained breathing apparatuses, 28 spare air bottles, 13 spare facepieces, and two IT packs. And the approximate value of these items is $35,300. And our Fire Department would like to give all of this equipment to the Waterloo Volunteer Fire Department. It is used equipment, but according to our chief reimer, it is in better condition than anything that the Waterloo Volunteer Firefighters have currently. So we hope that this could perhaps benefit another department. So that is the the first item on the agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Glancing around, I see no hands. Next item is Water Treatment Plant Project Number 338. And this project, much like something that was mentioned earlier by Member Crowell, this is a project that was reviewed even longer ago. This this project was reviewed in 2015 and the the needs assessment, during the needs assessment for our water treatment plant and was not selected to be part of the first phase of the water treatment plant project, which focused on electrical upgrades and was completed in, that phase was completed in 2019. But we have come around again and our softener system needs some rehabilitation for the water treatment plant. And so our Director of Engineering and Public Works is requesting that we authorize our Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for design and engineering services and to appropriate $50,000 for the water treatment plant rehabilitation project, or water treatment plant softener rehabilitation project. Are there any questions or additional comments regarding that project? And seeing none, our third item is some good news following up on the mayor's announcement last week. The city was, in fact, awarded a grant in the amount of $83,100 for a wastewater-based COVID-19 surveillance program. So what this means is that that we have been awarded the funds to conduct sampling at different locations throughout the city to monitor for COVID-19 in our wastewater supply. And the grant stipulates that the city would be coordinating with Ohio University to install wastewater sampling devices and to collect, process, and analyze samples for the virus. It will serve the entire city. And if we do find increasing levels of the COVID-19 virus in a particular sample, then that helps us to be forewarned and put out some public services announcements and hopefully help communicate with the members of the community that there may be increasing infection levels with some geographic targets. And so that's, that's what's really useful about these wastewater monitoring is it gives a little bit of advance notice before too many infections would show up and also helps it to be pinpointed to a particular part of the city. So we will need to authorize our city administration to proceed with this project and expend those grand dollars that we have been awarded. Any other information, comments, or questions on that? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
A quick comment, that there is no match. This is 100% coverage for this particular equipment as we move forward and as Councilmember Grace indicated, that what this does is it gives us the opportunity to identify increases in the viral load in our wastewater four to seven days ahead of actual cases manifesting themselves. Ohio University has additional sampling as well. This will give us the opportunity to put sampling at the Richland Avenue lift station, the Depot Lift Station, and at a site off of Home Street, I believe, which will allow us to, again, as was indicated, isolate where outbreaks may be occurring before they actually occur. And for us to message out before they actually occur, and for us to message out to the city to take extra caution in different sectors in the city of Athens. So this is a great opportunity. Again, there is no cost on the city side. There's no match from the city. This is being covered 100% by DSA through the Coronavirus CDBG Coronavirus Fund.
Excellent. Yeah, I think this is really fantastic that the city is able to participate in this. And like, from a nerdy science perspective, it's great information. I love the info that we're able to get and how we can help proactively protect our community. So, and just the timing of this is, the work completion date is April 30th of 2022, according to the grant specifications. But I just wanted to include that, and I think it's fantastic that the city was awarded this grant. Anything else? Then that concludes City and Safety Services. President Isley, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Grace. We'll move on to our special session now. The first item is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are present. We have a series of ordinances for a third reading. The first one is 4621, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 37, landscaping regulations. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 4621.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Felter?
This updates our landscaping ordinance that we require when commercial development is occurring. It puts in new definitions that are absent in the legislation as it stands currently. It expands the use and requirement of native species used in different plantings. It also outlaws the use of hazardous, noxious, or invasive species as outlined by the state. It also puts into existence a tree bank, a celebration tree program, and a pollinator-friendly front yard program, which are three things that we do not have. This follows along the pollinator discussion that we've had over the last couple months, was based on the B City examples, and now we have become a B City through this process, too, thanks to the SAM and all the work from the Sustainability Commission. So, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 4621. Any comments or questions from council members, other elected officials, or from our attendees? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4721 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.07, Miscellaneous Offenses, to add Section 13.07.06.1 litter, and amend section 13.07.07 citation. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 4721.
And a second from Councilmember Grace.
Okay, thank you. I feel like I'm freezing here. This is, sometimes when you change one ordinance, some of the other things don't work out through the process to be logically where they live now. And so this is moving litter outside of the other ordinances and putting it where it makes the most sense. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of 4721. Any questions or comments from council, elected officials, or our attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4821 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 9.10, Cutting Weeds, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 4821.
Second.
Thank you. This is another title that we have to change so that the landscaping ordinance and cutting weeds ordinance mesh. This is specifically identifying lawn grasses that have to be kept at an eight-inch or a D seeded status in people's yards.
We have a motion and second for approval of 4821. Any comments, questions from council members, elected officials, or our attendees? All those in favor signify, oh, we do, Councilmember Grace? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to thank Member Fall for all the work on this bundle of landscaping ordinances and pulling something together that involves so many different players and moving pieces, and is a lot of work. And so I just wanted to thank Member Fall for her work on this project.
Councilmember Claude Felter?
I would also briefly like to somewhat echo Member Grace and also applaud Councilmember Fall for reaching out to so many community members and getting feedback from lots of people about this. I think she talked to dozens and dozens of people to make this, to make these ordinances much better.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
I just want to say that I think Member Fall really got into the weeds of all this and came out smelling like a rose, so.
Oh, thank you, Member Reisner. And with that, we are going to take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4921 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, to include the landscaping permit fees, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 4921.
And we have a second from Councilmember Crowell.
Great, thank you. Like we did with the historic preservation fee, this is the different fee increases for the landscaping ordinance requirements, the tree bank, the celebration tree, and the front yard pollinator program establishes all the different fees for that. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Any comments or questions from council members, or elected officials, or our attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Great. Can I take a special second for this?
Sure.
Now that we have an official in 30 days Celebration Tree program, I would like to challenge people to find ways of celebrating people that are special, who may have touched you, especially over the COVID time. And I'm going to do the first buy for the Celebration Tree to celebrate two people who were instrumental in a lot of environmental stuff that the city has done. We've lost not only John Nouse, but also Mason Chambers. Mason was a fierce advocate for using native plants in landscaping. He worked very closely with the city doing city tree planting, and they're going to be very missed. So I would like to purchase the first Celebration Tree for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall, for that gesture. Very well put. Okay. We'll move on now to Ordinance 5020, and this is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Jennifer Mullen Camp to install a fence at 68 Hudson Avenue, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Nope, you're muted.
I thought I was done. That we adopt 5021.
Okay. We have a motion, second from Councilmember Grace.
Straightforward right-of-way permit process for a fence. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council members, elected officials, or our attendees? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5121 is an ordinance affirming the disposal of certain Fire Department equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 5121.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And as the title states, we are affirming that the Fire Department is authorized to dispose of equipment that it no longer needs. And this is different equipment than was mentioned in committee just previously. This equipment is a cutter package, a ram package, a spreader package, and a supply adapter. And this particular equipment was replaced by manufacturer with like but better equipment. And so this was, this particular batch was no longer needed by our department.
We have a motion and second for approval of the ordinance. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 5221 is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 5221.
And a second from Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, Member Grace. In these budgetary times, I'm going to go ahead and read the pertinent sections of this ordinance. Section 1, the 2021 Appropriation Ordinance 140-20 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $100,000 to General Fund, other administrative, 101.120, transaction code 600 for transfer; $19,000 to General Fund Fire, 101.208, transaction code 200 for vehicle maintenance; $4,800 to CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 300 for the CHIP program. And I will remind everyone that the CHIP is the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program; $14,100 to Parking Garage Fund, 733, transaction code 400 for payment on the upcoming parking meter note renewal; $22,600 to Sewer Debt Fund, 758, transaction code 400 to cover upcoming sewer loan payments; $250,000 to Sewer Fund 750, transaction code 600 for transfer; and $100,000 to Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund, 273, transaction code 600 for transfer, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section 2, the 2021 Appropriation Ordinance 14020, is amended by decreasing the following: decreasing CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 500, by $130,000 for the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324, and decreasing CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 500, by $75,000 for the wastewater treatment plant de-watering project, 320, and decreasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section 3, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer: from Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund 273 to Community Center Fund 271, that's $100,000, and from the Sewer Fund 750 to the Sewer Debt Fund 758 in the amount of $250,000. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thanks. We have the motion and second for approval of the ordinance. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, attendees? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll now move on to ordinances for a second reading. I'll read the titles, pause briefly to see if there are any comments or questions, and then move on to the next ordinance. 5421 is an ordinance authorizing wastewater remote site telemetry improvements, and this is project number 339, introduced by Councilmember Grace. Ordinance 5521 is an ordinance amending the 2021 Appropriation Ordinance and authorizing inter-fund transfers, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 5621 is an ordinance amending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by Ordinance 14120, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 5721 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University to allow installation of a campus shuttle stop at 9 Factory Street, introduced by Councilmember Ordinance 5821 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for transportation improvement district funding and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Claude Felter. Ordinance 5921 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city program funds for program year 2021 and declaring an emergency, and this is introduced by Councilmember Claude Felter. And I see that your hand is raised, Councilmember Claude Felter, yes.
Two quick things. One, just an update. As far as I know, there's still not a topic that they're going to focus on yet for this grant, but they're really trying to decide that. So hopefully by the next meeting, they'll have a topic. Also, this one, I don't think has to be an emergency because the deadline is June 17th. So because of tonight's special session, I think there's plenty of time to get this passed if people are willing to approve it. We do need the emergency for the TID grant, but not for the Small Cities grant.
But I don't think we're moving to pass these tonight.
Right. But I think, okay, well, that's my two cents. I think we have time for the regular process for this one.
Okay. Okay. All right. Ordinance 6021 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue 1 funds to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Claude Felter. And we'll now move on to the ordinance for the first reading, and this is the primary reason for our special session tonight. And this is an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for structural repairs to the Arts West facility, which is project number 340, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 06121.
Second. And who had the, second from Councilmember Smedley, is that? Okay, thank you. And the reason being...
The reason being is that this is a structural emergency. We need to do these repairs ASAP.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 06121.
Second. Councilmember Reisner was seconded. Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and read.
Go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and read through this. Whereas a vehicle collision caused significant damage to the Arts West facility, section 1, due to the need for immediate action to make structural repairs to stabilize the Arts West facility, the city of Athens declares an emergency situation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 735.051. Section 2, 2021 Appropriation Ordinance 140-20, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $100,000 to Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 3, Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $100,000 from Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500, for said structural repair, project 340. Section 4, the city auditor is hereby directed to receive reimbursed insurance Section 4, the city auditor is hereby directed to receive reimbursed insurance payments for claim, for the claim in this accident in the Recreation Fund 270. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay. We have the motion and second for approval of this, of this ordinance. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials or our attendees? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. And also, and a thank you, because I think Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky has been working quite diligently on, and I know our Service Safety Director, Tom Pyle, towards getting this moved forward for the repairs for this in quick fashion. And we are making a brief variation from our normal format tonight. And we just, we do have a short announcement from Councilmember Claude Felter and then we'll move to adjournment.
Thank you very much for this exception, President Nisley. This is an announcement that I really regret to make and I've been dreading giving this announcement for days. But unfortunately, this has to be my final city council meeting. I will be accepting a job that requires me to step down from council. So it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with each one of you. I've learned a lot from each of you. Excuse me. And I am still very grateful for the 2,000-plus people that voted for me to give me a chance to be on council. I, I wish you all the very best and I really am sad to be leaving council. But I am excited for this job. I will be working as a regional representative for, for Secretary, excuse me, for Senator Sherrod Brown. And so I just can't be an elected official anymore. So very best wishes to all of you. And I think we've been an excellent cohort. Thank you.
And our, our best wishes to you, Councilmember Claude Felter.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. And with that, on a little bit of a sad note, if we could have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Some moved. And congrats.
By Councilmember Smedley. And a second? Councilmember Grace. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Good luck, Beth. Thank you.
Good luck, Beth.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot. You've all been so